We always have a word of prayer before we have our meeting here at the Board of Commissioners Meetings, and so I'll lead us in this prayer at this time. Lord, just come to you, just thanking you for the blessings of life that you've given us. Lord, we want to come to you at this time and just thank you for our veterans that have given the ultimate sacrifice across our world today. And, Lord, we just, all those that have gone on before and the ones that are in the military now, Lord, we just pray your protection on them. Lord, we just pray for our emergency services, our EMS, our fire department, law enforcement. The world we live in today, Lord, we just need to stop and think and take time to pray for these individuals every day, for their protection, Lord. And I just pray and I just thank you for the ones that we have here in Hart County, the dedicated people that we have to serve, the people of Hart County. And, Lord, we just come to you tonight and just ask you to be with us during this meeting. And, Lord, we always ask you for the wisdom and guidance, and by name we pray. Amen. That's all standing for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call the order, the Tuesday, August the 13th, 2024 Board of Commissioners First of all, I'd like to welcome each one here tonight. We know that there's going to be some issues discussed that maybe has some interest, and we appreciate you being here, whether you're here in person or if you're watching on our YouTube channel or on HTC Channel 3, we welcome all of you. We do have a, we do have an issue with, we want to cut some of the items off the agenda tonight because of, we, as commissioners, want to go to the funeral home, pay our respects to the Johnson family. So, we, while we cut some of these items off the agenda, we still will go over our budgeted items that we had already planned. I would like to see, I'll make a motion to cut the solar ordinance, second reading off recreational vehicles, and...
Job description, we'll talk about it later.
Job description and jail discussion, take those off.
I don't know if anybody's scared about the jail, that's the only thing.
He was at the funeral, he had to be a part of it.
Yeah, he had to.
All right. One other thing, if y'all want to, we can put the financial report off at the next meeting, too, that saves a few minutes if you want to do that.
Let's do that.
Okay.
And I do have two small additions. I got Jason Ford here from the DDA about the scarecrows, permission to use the square, we shouldn't take it a minute. And I have GM under constable officers, department heads, to make an announcement about the VNEs having at the direct department, shouldn't take it a minute.
Okay, what was the first one?
The scarecrows.
Jason Ford, Harwell DDA. Jason Ford.
Jason, okay.
Harwell DDA about scarecrows.
All right.
And then GM under number eight, under the department head, about on the VNE at the direct department.
I give you a motion to approve the agenda with those additions and exclusions.
Okay, also, I've got Mr. Fulgham is going to be here under remarks by invited guests.
Okay, we'll add him in, Mr. Jason.
You may give you another motion.
We got a second. Second. All right, motion back to Mr. Brown, second back to Mr. Teasley, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's four o vote. All right, we're going down to approve minutes from previous meeting. Is there any additions, corrections need to be made to those? If not, can we get a motion to approve as written?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion back to Mr. Teasley, second back to Mr. Brown, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's four o vote. All right, then we'll come down to remarks by invited guests, committees or authorities, Mr. Fulgham, if you would come.
No, either one, I got two of them.
Okay.
He'll back, he'll back clean them.
Hey, all right, thanks for having us up. Just the time of year for us to plan for fall events, the scarecrows is one of them. We usually set those up just a little bit before October, so they're up the full month of October. Just asking again that we're able to use the courthouse grounds for that. One other thing, on October 2nd, we'll be hosting what's called Mobilize Main Street, which about 50 or 55 Main Street program directors, DDA folks, will be in town touring downtown Hartwell, and we'd certainly invite y'all to come to that. It'll be kind of the morning of October 2nd, so we'll be starting off at High Cotton Music Hall and then taking a tour, so if you have any questions, I'll certainly answer them.
I make a motion, we'll approve that request to be used for our square for the scarecrows.
Just need to make sure we don't have anything on the grass, because it'll kill the grass, and it has been occasionally.
Then we got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Brown, any other discussion, questions or concern? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's four o vote.
Okay, thanks, we appreciate it.
All right, now, Mr. Fulgham, if you'd like to come and tell about the Veterans Day Parade.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is our second annual Veterans Day Parade. Last year, we got a damper put on it, rained, okay? But we went ahead and had it, but a lot of people didn't come out because they thought it was, because of rain, wasn't no need in coming out. So maybe this year, good Lord, it gets some good weather. It's on November the 10th, it's on a Sunday this year, and it starts at 3:00 PM. I'm telling everybody, go to church, go eat, and come to the parade. I'm like, I'd like the Commissioners to come and be in it. Anybody can be in this parade to show support to our veterans, and I'm asking all veterans to be in this parade. Franklin County, Elberton, I don't care, we all veterans, we all served our country and everything, I'd like for y'all to be in that parade. Now, with that being said, no politicking in the parade, nothing political, okay, or whatnot, this is about our veterans, bring Old Glory, let's wave Old Glory, bring the flag, nothing more I like to see is that flag waving. Now, I ordered 600 flags, little small military flags for the children, okay? Plastic handles, so they won't get hurt in the flag. But here's the thing, I gotta put them together, 600, so if anybody want to help me. But anyway, it's all worth it, it's for a good cause, our veterans in Hart County, people just don't realize, there's a lot of veterans, because we don't wear, you know, our uniform or anything to show it or whatnot. And so, come out and show support for our veterans, okay? Like I said, anybody's welcome to be in it, and I'm looking forward to seeing the Commission, I think y'all was in it last year, as a matter of fact, and so, but anyway, I'm in process of getting some military vehicles to come in and to be in it, so what's a Veterans Day Parade without military vehicles, right? But anyway, I'm in process of working on some bands, getting them down. I remember when I was a little kid, Hart County Christmas Parade, all the bands came in from Albert County, Stevens County, Franklin County was in the Christmas Parade band, and I'm reaching out to them, too, okay? So, but anyway, along with our Hart County High School band. But anyway, anybody says, I'm welcome, and I hope it turn out to be great, because this is one time of year, it's Veterans Day, and so, let's show our support to our veterans, because where will we be without our veterans, right? So anyway, thank you very much, Commissioners, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, now we'll have our rec director, Mr. Jim Owens.
Hey, guys, I wanted to let you guys know about an activity that's going on. September the 5th, we'll start approximately 6:30, it'll be at New Park. We're going to have a pep rally, and this is going to be for everybody, it's going to be for the high school. This will be, like I said, September 5th. On September the 6th, we play Flory Branch Falcons at Hernan Stadium, and then on September the 7th, our rec teams start their season, we're not sure where, if it's home or away yet, we haven't received our schedule, but we're going to go ahead and do the pep rally for everybody. We're going to have a bonfire, the bands will be there, the cheerleaders will be there, football players will be there. We have 104 cheerleaders this year for rec department and 238 kids playing football. So we're going to invite everybody to be there, and have fun and support Hart County and raise the spirit. So, look forward to seeing everybody there. Appreciate you, Jim.
All right, we mark off county administrators for...
IBA Director, position C.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, we got to go to Chairman of the Commissioners Board.
I'd just like to say, keep Johnson family in your prayers and thoughts, that, I mean, Stephen was a born and raised here in Hart County, farmed here all his life, and drove school bus, and a super, super guy, and he's just one of those guys that makes Hart County what it is today. So, just like for you to remember that, we'll move on to District 2.
I'd like to echo what Marshall said about Stephen Johnson and his family, like he was acting in agriculture and stuff, just like what he said, and, you know, y'all need to keep that family in your prayers, that's all I got.
District 4, Commissioner Brown.
Echoing what you guys said, condolences for the Johnson family, and I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
District 5, Commissioner Dorsey.
Y'all will echo those same sentiments, the entire Johnson family's been a good friend for many years, and Stephen definitely be missed, always enjoyed our conversations.
All right, thank you. All right, now we'll move on down to 12C, IBA Director, we're going to announce the three finalists for this position tonight, and then they'll be voted on in 14 days as far as the IBA Director. And we got Bradley Day from Homer, Georgia, Matt Denton from Hartwell, Georgia, and Terry Partain from Hartwell, Georgia. Can I get a motion to take these as the three finalists in the announcement on the record?
I give a motion to take these three finalists.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Dorsey, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's four o vote. All right, and then we'll move on to City of Rawson annexation requests. This is the one we had before, and some uncompleted documents were left out, and now they've completed everything, so, and it's going to be R2, I think, is what it's going to be zoned at.
Correct, R2.
I am a little confused here, I mean, these dates are important, but the first page says July the 10th, 2024, second page says July the 19th, 2024, so...
I received it on the 19th, the later date.
You received that?
Yeah.
Okay, but anyway, I just thought that was, because...
You think it was drafted?
The way these clocks are, I mean, you know, time, these, that's pretty important, but it does say that we have 45 days from, from the 10th.
The 45 days from time we get notification.
Correct.
And I had to go pull the certified mail to see what date that was, but it's well within our 45 days.
Looks like it might have been drafted on the 10th and sent on the 19th.
I don't know, but anyway, do we have an objection to this annexation? That's the question.
I think that, you know, it is unfortunate that they didn't give as much information as the city of Hart provides as far as planning, but with it being on a state highway, you know, there is no really objection that the county can have, in my, this is my opinion, as far as material burden or the other definitions or criteria that we have to meet from the state, the state code there, if we're going to object it. So, in that case, I think this is more along the lines, if someone was to object at the school board, if anybody would have more of something to stand on, if it's going to be a burden with them, because if there's kids and families that live in this multifamily complex, they will all be attending North Art, or if there is another elementary school that, uh... Most of the kids in that area, but I think all of them.
Most everybody in City of Rawson goes to, right now, the City of Rawson Elementary.
Yeah, they go to Franklin County Schools.
But the land over is in Hart County.
In that area...
But it'll be in the city of Rawson once it's annexed, and that will be in part of the Franklin County School system.
But it's still a kind of a question, why are you paying Hart County school taxes and your kids are going to Franklin County schools? That's been my question, too.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
It's been that way for years and years and years.
And just so the public knows, the City of Rawson, this property is already in their service delivery area for water, sewer, all the services, EMS, at the moment.
Do you need action from us, do we take action?
Need a motion to approve.
What if we don't approve? What if we just don't take no action?
Well, I guess it'd be a vote of no objections.
I make a motion that we approve it, no objections, there's no material burden increase to the county at all.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, have a second.
Second.
All right, got a second by Commissioner Teasley, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's four o vote. All right, so we'll move on down to, of course, road repair.
Yeah, I put in your packet, this damage was done by Georgia Power when they was building the substation out there, and you'll see two, two different prices in there from Stratton and Sons. Georgia Power is strictly responsible for the 151,001.39. That's a big contract with Georgia Power that we really don't have anything to do with, just to let you know what it is. Our question is, is whether or not you want to finish the rest of the road out. Georgia Power's damage was from just right about the welding shop there, Tucker Welding Shop, down past the substation. All that'd be milled completely out and rebuilt. The question is, do you want us to, do we want to go ahead while they're there and top the rest of the road out of the stop sign? That asset costs us 71,990.
I know it wouldn't on the list, but to me, it just, it's one of those things that, you know, why, why just pave that one section, not just finish it out? Like I said, I know that we haven't agreed on this road before, but to me, where we're sitting and what we're looking to do in the near future...
And again, our side of this is estimate, we'll be built by the amount of asphalt to use, so it could be, it could be less than this.
Do you know when they're going to start on this?
No, I don't, I got to get back with...
I think it'll be a few weeks.
The other question I got is, some of these problems were created by high-pressure water jets under the road.
Right. That's the section they're going to replace.
I understand, but where I'm getting at is, you're patching at four inches and you're leveling, how do we know for sure we're going to have any of these cavities that may have occurred, how do we know that?
Well, that'd be up to, I would say, I would think Stratton and Sons would be wanting to get it prepped to pave back, I would think, I'd have to check and see to be sure.
Would our road superintendent, doesn't our road superintendent go check?
Correct, yeah, he'll, he'll check the work that's been...
My point is, this is going to be hidden, this is how this popped up when they had all that heavy equipment coming in there, because the asphalt collapsed in places.
Some of that was...
It was on the shoulders, too, which is going to be the worst place.
Some, most of the collapsed places I'm aware of was caused by the water jet.
From boring.
Boring through, picking up...
They come up from the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, but again, like I said, we'll inspect it that they're doing it.
Well, just like that, then that whole base of that road, that needs some...
Well, that's why they got this extra in there, because they're going to have to fix it, you know, that's one of those...
But there's nothing, the way I read it, there's nothing that, it's basically just patching and milling and leveling, there's, I don't know how we're going to ensure the base is going to be sufficient.
Well, the only thing we can do is inspect it as they're doing it.
I mean, I personally would expect, that's why that road superintendent, while we have him hired, that he's going to...
Yeah, now, he is, I mean, as I say, Shannon's met with him multiple times, I tell Georgia Power and Stratton and everybody else, so...
And surely as much paving as these guys have done, they would inspect it.
I don't know how much they know, they wouldn't know where these bores were, because the problem is, they couldn't go all the way through, they had issues trying to bore up there.
Well, basically...
I just want to make sure we don't have...
I mean, all I can do is run, is compact it and then do a compaction test on it to be sure it's holding, I mean, that's...
This is not our concern anyway.
No, Georgia Power's paying for that, correct.
I understand, but...
But our part that we're trying to figure out is for, if we want to do our part...
Our part's fine, as far as doing it, but my question is, the, I'm just thinking, we're looking out for, once this is done by Georgia Power, then it's going to be turned back over to the county if we still got these issues, that's my concern.
Well, I mean, we'll, like I say, we'll inspect it just like we do any other road work that somebody else is doing on our roads.
Know there's issues there, that's all I'm saying.
I make a motion to go ahead and pave the rest of the road with the...
With splosh.
Other than the Georgia Power bid, the Hart County bid, a 71,990, using splosh money.
I give you a second.
Okay, we got a motion, second, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's four o vote. All right, we'll move on to the new business tractor.
You got it in your packet, we've got a John Deere tractor that we've had some transmission problem with, and it's outlined, can we find it, how many hours it's got on it? And Ed and Shannon both feel that it'd be best to trade it in now while it's running and we can get a decent price for it. Let me find my paper. You'll see that for the, under the state contract with James Short Tractors, Kubota M5-111, like we have for the rest of the Bushall Tractors, identical, is a sale price of 69,385, and another $1,900 for the weight, counterweight from the front end of it, which brings the price to, plus that, and they offered us $20,000 trade-in on the tractor, which will bring the total amount we spent, is 51,285, that'd be out of splosh money, too. That would give us three, three new tractors on the Bushall, I think it's three.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Brown, I'll give you a second, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's four o vote. All right, we're going to authorizing resolution for the transit grant fiscal year 2026.
This is, this is the same grant we do every year, this funds, this GDOT 511 grant that funds transit service. What this resolution is, is giving the administrator authorization to sign the paperwork as it comes through.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's four o vote. Now we'll move on to public comment, do we have anyone here that would like to speak public comment about any issues in the county? All right, if not, we'll go on to, okay?
There's a lot of people here, disease, nature, poor...
If you would, come up.
My name's Debbie Dorman, I moved here in September, and if there is one thing I am passionate about, it's animal welfare. I have been a volunteer elsewhere for years.
Excuse me, ma'am, we're going to get into that meeting later on.
Okay, for this, okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, you'll have time to speak.
You can tell I was over anxious.
You'll have a chance, you'll have a chance.
I just spoke with Kim, and she advised if we needed to, we could, we could move, do without the executive session if we need to.
She said, what did she say?
We can do without having an executive session tonight if we need to.
Okay.
Do we need to remove it or...
Okay, now, no executive session, can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Dorsey, all in favor, it's four o vote. All right, now we'll move on to the budget of this, and like I said, I know a lot of people may have comments, but we would still like to get to the funeral home tonight, and we're trying to get out of here by 7:30, okay? So if you got comments that someone else has done made, just, just let those comments stand, okay? But we'll start off with the animal shelter. I know there's been a lot of stuff on Facebook, and some of it, I don't know where it came from, I'll be honest with you. I mean, there's been statements made that the Hart County Board of Commissioners is going to defund the Northeast Georgia Animal Shelter. How many of y'all heard that?
Is that where that came from?
How do you, where did it come from? Did anybody talk to Terrell about it?
I haven't thought of it so.
So here, did I say that we're going to defund the Northeast Georgia Animal Shelter?
Nope, I ain't responded on social media that it wasn't true.
Well, and it's about, you know, I understand that, but to start off on the basis that the Commissioners are going to defund the animal shelter, I mean...
Some of us didn't hear that. Some of us did not hear that.
Well, I know, but some of you raised your hand, some of you raised your hand that you did hear it, and I just, I just want to put that to the, to the side right now. We have never said we were going to defund the Northeast Georgia Animal Shelter and start a jail, dog jail program? I don't even know what that is.
How much a night do we get for that?
My point is, there's a lot of miscommunication out here, there's a lot of miscommunication. If you got a question, call one of us.
Their numbers are newspaper.
Yeah, we're, I mean, I'll be glad, I'll be glad to talk on any issue, whether it's, and if I don't know the answer, I'll be glad to try to find the answer for you, just like Ms. Madoff called me the other day, and we worked through a situation. But to get on Facebook and criticize people or what they're doing, it's not fair, and I know we signed up for this, and we're not going to be in non-fair, but I, we are better than that in Hart County. I believe we're better than that, okay? But like I said, in the future, if anybody's got any questions, please call one of us, and we can put some of this to bed, but, yes, Ms. Madoff.
Can I go with the budget first, just so we all get, so we know what we're talking about?
Yeah, let's do that, let's go with the budget.
For y'all's concern, for y'all's concern, last year, the funding for the animal shelter was 88,842. They turned in a request this year...
Terrell, speak up a little, they can't hear you right there.
It just working?
Yeah, yeah.
The last year, the budget for the animal shelter was 88,842, what they requested.
No, no.
According to the, they actually requested 140,000, it was cut by 33%, and that's what they received in 21,300.
I have the paper working. I might have...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let me get through, then we'll... Again, this year, the request was 126,201, that's a 32% increase, that's above my pay grade to say yes. yes to. I recommend it. If you look in the budget, that number is there. It's up to these folks, will they, will that number stays there, will they adjust it? Any number in this budget, they can go back and adjust. So that's where we at. Now, where all this stuff come from, we were defunding this or defunding that, I have no idea. And this, this paper was sent to Pam after we done it. She's got a copy of this, so she knew what was in it.
Okay, if you would, come to the front and state your name and.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name's Sherri Reeve. I've been on the Animal Shelter Board for twenty-four years now, so I've been through all the, the growth and everything. The main question that you have about the budget is why is the budget increased the way it is? And let me address those things. Let me give a little bit of history, because I don't think everybody here is familiar with the, the animal shelter. We started operations in nineteen ninety-eight, and at that time, there was twenty-one hundred, five hundred and twelve people in the county. We added to the animal shelter in two thousand and eight. We had a facility of two temporary classrooms for housing cats, so that they could be in that area apart from the canines. And then in twenty-twenty-four, we're about to open the new facility. This facility is not a luxury. This facility is actually a requirement. I know that you've been frustrated by the fact that we've been closed due to parvo. We're very frustrated by that fact. That's one of the main things that we're addressing with this. We've got three issues that we're looking at to address. One is overcrowding of the shelter right now. We don't have enough runs to accommodate the population, and the population has grown thirty-one percent since we started. Your population, according to the census here right now, is twenty-eight, two hundred and twenty-six. So there's been a tremendous growth in the county, and we really haven't kept up with that growth as far as our buildings are concerned. So overcrowding is one thing. The parvo, the separation of the animals who have been vetted, and let me explain that. When an animal comes in, if they've been surrendered to us, there's a period of time that we have to wait until we can have those ready for adoption. So that vetting period, once they've been vetted, our, our view is that they will be moved to the new building, and that building will house only those animals that are adoptable, and it will be separated physically from the other. So if a parvo were outbreak in one facility, the other facility will be separated. So that's the second reason that we looked at doing this. The third reason is, the regulations for the Department of Agriculture are changing also. They also want this separation of vetted and non-vetted animals. So we're looking to the future of staying in compliance with the Department of Agriculture. We started this campaign back in twenty-twenty, and we set a notification to all the jurisdictions that this is what we had in mind. COVID put us aside, like it put many things aside. So we're now back ramped up and ready to, to operate that. We hope to open it this year, within a next couple of months. So that's the reason for the huge increase in your, your opinion of the, the increase, is the fact that we are providing another facility, certainly better facility for those people within our jurisdiction. It's a hard decision for the board to make, to go out and say, we're going to raise five hundred thousand dollars to do this. We have never asked for money from the jurisdictions. We've always raised it ourselves. That's a lot of fundraising, five hundred thousand dollars to build this. The money is there, and we are in the building process. And the good part is, we've gotten confirmation, affirmation from the county that this is the right decision. That's how we got five hundred thousand dollars. We've got three contributions. So we know that it's the right thing to do for the county and the other jurisdictions, and you guys have confirmed it. It's kind of nice to be in a county that feels that way about their animals, that they're willing to contribute five hundred thousand dollars. So that's the reason for the increase. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
When you talk about building, adoption building, I think you stated in the letter that, and then, a, a, a dog gets parvo or whatever, that dog can be isolated over into another section of building. You will not have to shut the, the services down at that point?
That's the intention. The intention is that the ones that will break with parvo are, are those that are in the, we'll call it the intake building, those that come in either from Animal Control, from a person finding a stray, from an owner surrendering an animal. But there's a period of time where they will break, and they will be in that building. So that vetting period of time is when the parvo will break. Once that period of time is over for the individual canine, it would be moved to the adoption building. So that's kind of the clean building, if you will. Those are the healthy animals that are up for adoption. So your point is very well taken. Yes, that one facility could be then isolated out and allow us to continue to operate in the other two facilities, the facilities where the felines are and the facility where the canines for adoption are.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners?
When is, when are the services going to be restored? Right now, you're not open on Thursdays. That's what was initially done. We have asked repeatedly that there be an evening hour day. So I hope that when you restart this on Thursday, maybe you have, you're open to seven o'clock, so those folks who can work, who do work, can come. I think that would actually help.
We are opening again on Thursday when we open the new facility.
How late will you be open?
In fact, Kami's here. Our director's here, if you want to talk anymore about that, Kami, or, I mean.
We have, we have closed on Thursdays again with, because of stabbing.
If you would like to come to the front, please.
We originally closed on Thursdays because, when COVID started and all that, because of stabbing and staffing issues, and then because of COVID. But when the new building opens, we plan to open back on Thursdays.
How late are you going to be open?
Probably just till four.
I mean, that's, we hear this all the time.
No, we are open on Saturday.
I understand, but sometimes people have other plans. I think it would be good to have one day a week where you're open till seven o'clock or so, so that people can come in.
Yeah, and that's kind of what we did Saturdays for, was, you know, so that people that work during the week would have all day Saturday. And that's why we stay open all day on Saturday instead of, you know, instead of closing half a day. Now, it's something we could definitely talk about, but.
We can certainly review it. We can bring it back to the board and talk about it. But right now, opening on Saturday for the entire day was our solution to somebody who needed to get to the shelter, but also work during the week. Anything else?
Any other questions?
I had a quick question on the new facility. It says, keep, keep us in compliance with the Department of Ag. So they, they're requiring you guys to build this facility?
They're requiring us to separate the animals by whatever means we choose, but this is the, this is the cleanest way to do it, is to have a building that's isolated out for those animals that have already been vetted.
I got you, okay.
Well, this is the same thing you brought last year, the one you, before you started the building. You was going to do the same thing when you come in last year. I call it clean and dirty. You want to have a clean building, a dirty building.
That's all right. That'll work, because we understand it, yes.
But any animal, whether he's sick or not, he goes in a dirty building first, and that's.
Everything, all the intake, the old, original building, the original building that we have will remain operational. So Animal Control, individual citizens, will all come to that building, and that's where we'll do all our intake. And then they'll stay in that building, that facility, until they are clean, as you put it, and move to the other building, the adoption building. That's exactly right.
I have a question for the director.
Sure.
Why couldn't we just designate one day during the week for somebody to be at the shelter for emergencies, for, for intake or whatever, or whatever it might be?
One day besides the days that were open?
Besides Saturday, which is a half a day, but like if.
No, Saturday, we're a whole day.
We're a whole day.
We're a whole day Saturday.
Could we do like the middle of the week, like Wednesday, open until later hours for those that might need something during the week?
I mean, it's something we could definitely talk about.
All right, let's just kind of stay on the subject here of, of the funding. It's where we at now, okay? Instead of getting off on the hours that we're working and that sort of thing.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity presented.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Can I kind of explain my understanding of the funding? Probably, evidently, there was supposedly agreement signed years ago. I've seen an agreement, but I've never seen one.
Never been signed.
Never, it's never been signed. My suggestion is to get that agreement worked out, and that way this, this debate and argument don't happen every year. Does that mean, does that make sense? It's based on, and evidently, I look back at Franklin County's budget, and, and they seem to be following that same formula. There's a certain formula for X number of dogs, X number of dollars.
We have no signed agreement with any of the jurisdictions.
We need to.
We came to the, to the conclusion several years ago, how we would allocate to different jurisdictions.
Basically, by, by, by law, we are supposed to have an agreement signed with you, to give you any money.
We'll get that in work on it.
Yeah, we really need to work that out, whatever it works out to be. I'm not saying what it should be or what it shouldn't be, but by law, we need that agreement in hand, just like the agreement with the, with the Chamber of Commerce. We can't give them money without a signed written agreement with them. Just to, because our auditors question me on that every year. They won't see the agreement.
All right, we'll be excited to work on it back there.
Yeah, right. And again.
Don't get real happy with it, though.
You got to understand the agreement involving negotiations on both sides now.
Yeah. All right, anyone else have a comment they would like? Yes, ma'am?
We're gonna get another aisle, don't we? An exit aisle.
Hi, my name's Jen Wagner. I'm resident of Hart County Dewey Rose area. Moved in in November. I'm thrilled to be here. We've built our retirement home. We've got acreage. I have a little bit of background in the animal welfare world. I'm Director of Animal Alliance, Georgia. We have worked with Barrow County. We've worked with Thomas County. We've worked with Winnet County, and been pleased to do it, because we don't necessarily want the government to be funding a lot of stuff. It cuts down on our freedom of what we want to do, and it, it really is our responsibility as pet lovers to put forward. That being said, just to talk about numbers, because I did pull up the budget, the final budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, which has some previous year's numbers in it as well. So in twenty-twenty-one, the amount allocated to Animal Control was a hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. In twenty-twenty-two, the requested amount, and the approved, I'm sorry, the approved amount was a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. The department request in twenty-twenty-three was a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Approved was eighty-eight thousand. So that was a thirty-three percent reduction from fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three. I'm not sure why that amount was reduced, because the need did not drop. If anybody has been in rescue for any amount of time, they can tell you that this is the worst time any of us have ever seen in rescue, and that's universal through the state and through the country. You're seeing euthanasia at an all-time high in the metro areas, in the rural areas, in the north and in the south. And on that note, you see parvo breakouts and shutdowns in the metro shelters as well. This is not a unique situation to Negas or anybody else. This has been a problem for everybody. I will say, I got the numbers for Negas for the first half of twenty-twenty-four. They had an intake grand total for the areas they serve of eight hundred and forty-three animals. Of that, three hundred and seventy-three of the animals were Hart County, not Hartwell, Hart County. Of those, two hundred and three of those were owner surrender animals, and a hundred and nineteen were stray. So we are punching above our weight when it comes to animals going into Negas from Hart County outside the municipalities. So my question is, if we are going to fund them at a rate where it is reasonable, I mean, you can't give somebody five dollars and say they're funded, because that's not adequate funding for the job that we are asking them to do. We cut them by a third last year. We have asked them to do more with less, and their numbers continue to go up. I would strongly urge that we consider, as we're looking at the twenty-twenty-four budget, that we give them enough money to do the job that they need to do, and then let the private nonprofits step in and help them the rest of the way, with the end goal of reducing intake from the county, so that it becomes a moot point, so that we are spending less because there were fewer animals going in. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Martha, let's try to have a quick question.
Okay.
The budget spreadsheet she was using for twenty-twenty-three doesn't add up correctly to what's actually budgeted. And she said it was eighty-eight thousand, it was actually a hundred and twenty-one thousand.
Nothing. That's, that's an accounting, that's an accounting thing. You got, you got an extra payment due in there that all of it is moved back to previous.
Yeah, and, well, that's not easy to understand. So my question, what is the twenty-twenty-three budget for the Animal Control line? I don't know.
Is the budget number, eighty-six, whatever it was.
According to this eighty-eight number.
Yeah, whatever, whatever that number was.
Eighty-eight, yeah.
But the, the overpayment is accounting. They'll, when they do the audit, they'll pull that number back, put it in the previous year.
So, so the number for Negas in two thousand twenty-three was?
Eighty-eight thousand.
Did some of that go to Hart County Animal Control? Or is not, or we're down here to know what's paying out wrong?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
It does include Animal Control.
Yes, it is. You're looking for. Eighty-eight thousand, right?
Yes. All right, anyone else?
I have the direction from the board. What I need to do with this, leave it alone, change it?
Well, we, I think we need to get that contract in order and come up with a formula to where we don't have to be discussing this every year. It would be automatic.
All right, that's what I'm saying. That's where I'm going with the contract. Somebody agrees on it, we ain't got to go through this argument.
I'm good with that. I just want to make sure if we do that, that we don't have a situation like we had a few weeks ago, where the Sheriff's Department had that situation.
What was the situation?
I'll tell you about it offline.
All right, and just so people understand what we're talking about, the jail kennels? We did. We, we built ten or eleven kennels at the jail, because we have to have a place to hold dogs until we can get them into the shelter. We get a vicious dog, we have to contain that dog right there. So instead of going from the three out in the open we had, we've got ten or twelve under a, twelve up, under, under a covered concrete. I mean, it's, it's fixed, and the Department of Ag checks it, everybody, just like they do y'all every month. So that's where the jail thing come in at. It's just a place we got to have to hold dogs until we, y'all close down for two weeks. What are we going to do with the dog if we have to hold for two weeks? We got to have a place to hold. So that's the whole deal about the jail stuff. And that's not in this funding. It's not broken down in this budget. It's covered under jail budget. Okay?
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? Ma'am, I know you were going to speak before. Then you still need to speak.
No, I, all I just would go and suggest is, I, I mean, why isn't there more of like pressure when people adopt their dogs, stay in there? I have been running through my neighborhood. I've had triples in the town that I've had to call Chris Lack a few times. The people they know, some of the people, I mean, they let these animals run, they don't neuter them. And, you know, if you can't appeal on an emotional level, look at the financial, you know, the cost of euthanasia and disposal of bodies, which is horrible, it's more than just getting the damn dog stayed and neutered. And it drives me crazy, these animals have souls. I see turkeys all over this sufficient area. Why don't people do this? Why can't we make them do this? Why can't we give them some kind of break? They get their dog or cat stayed and neutered. It breaks my heart.
All right, thank you. All right. All right, I'll make a motion that we get back to the contract and come up with a contract with the animal shelter that's in compliance with whatever that formula is that seems to be used.
It seems to be what Franklin County used on their budget. I'm not, I'm just, I'm not disputing the, the formula. I just need to see it in writing with some signatures on it.
It, it was set up such that you went back, I think it was four years, and it was a weighted formula of population and animals, because I was one of the ones involved in that.
What we had with all the jurisdictions, the cities did a different formula. Two counties chose to do it on one of these. So that's how we're.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I personally don't care which, which way we do it. We just need something said, so we ain't got to go through this argument every year. I don't like to debate no better than y'all do. Don't get me wrong.
How long will it take you probably to come up with a contract?
Well, we're going to be involved with it.
Oh, okay.
There's going to be, there's going to be several challenges with this. One is everybody's budget cycle's different. So getting this thing kicked, but just getting, getting it started, I don't know, Bowersville's not a financial contributor, are they? Yeah, okay, they are. All right, good. So that means all the municipalities would be contributing as well. So, I mean, it's just getting everybody started, and there's going to have to be an understanding somewhere that because of the way the fiscal year's hit, and the way the formula is going to be developed, it's going to be different. Franklin County's fiscal year is different than Hart County's fiscal year. So just so everybody understands that.
Okay. So I'll, I'll make a motion that, that we would work toward a contract. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we would work toward a contract, a binding contract, to the formula that's been expressed before, that nobody's got any signed documents of, but, you know, and give Carol the authority to respond back and forth with emails with your board to see what we can get with all these numbers, and we'd be done with this before our budget goes out.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second, any questions?
I think we really need an intergovernmental agreement.
Well, we can call that contract.
And the reason I say that, because a contract, one board can't bind a future board. If you've got an intergovernmental agreement, you can renew it.
Okay.
We can name it, whatever you want to name it.
All right.
If the contract says that the funding needs to be more than they're asking for, will you commit to funding it?
If you're bound by agreement, you got to.
If the formula comes out that actually they need $140,000 and they're asking for $123,000, are you guys going to?
It's not a contract till both parties sign it.
You got to understand, there'll be negotiations, and just because they come up with a number, don't mean we're going to accept that number. There'll be negotiations, but once it's signed, it's a signed document.
They're using that formula now.
Then, and they ask for more money, then you're saying you may not sit to, even if they're asking them to go through the process.
That's not what we're saying.
No.
That's not what we're saying. We're saying negotiation, we need to negotiate this agreement. What's the agreement that's signed?
Or we even commit anything.
Both sides have to live up to.
Yes, but you're asking them to look at a formula based on whatever Hart County's contributing to come up with a contract.
That formula's already hanging out there. We've been, they've been trying to live by it, and we tried to live by it on this budget.
It's just not a signed document.
But if it comes out with the formulas more than they're asking for?
Hey, we want to make life easier.
We don't agree to, we don't agree to.
Right, so it's basically kind of a non-medical right now, so?
Until we have a contract, we don't know what we're agreeing to.
But we want to be legal.
Right, and to make sure you guys are not be committed to funding the shelter as they're asking for, or whatever the amount is up to. Since you're also asking them to be open to order and more things, but you cut their budget by 30%?
Well, we didn't ask them to be open longer.
We haven't cut their budget. No, 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 no.
No, 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 no. It's two separate things.
We haven't cut their budget 33%, we haven't cut their budget a dollar.
They didn't approve it 33% from the last one they asked, that's what we're talking about. So the premise is you want them to go do all this work, but aren't you going to be willing to fund it? So...
Let's just let it work out between the board and Carol, and let's see if we can get some...
We got to involve Franklin County.
Just to keep things sane, when you, what's the deadline that you want them to have a contract?
Before budget.
We'll do the final.
We got to do, we got to vote on the budget.
We got to get all the parties who are funding this animal shelter to be part of this. That's the big picture, that's what we got to look at. Because it's not going to be fair to Hart County if Franklin County says we're not going to fund it next year or their next budget cycle. So that's why I said an intergovernmental agreement versus a contract, because that way it binds us all.
So what happens in the meantime while we're getting all the governments together?
Well, I think the funding is already there, you just got to keep working toward that. And that's why I said everybody's on different fiscal years. So you're just going to have to, it's going to have to be deliberate, it's going to take time. It's not something that's going to be able to be done in a month. I'm just being realistic here, folks.
I'm just confused as to why the Hart County funding for animals is dependent on Royston or Franklin or Harvick.
Everybody contributes toward the total operational cost. So from the animal shelter standpoint, they're M and O money, that's what this is. So if, let's just say times get tight and people, governments have to make decisions to cut funding or cut costs, this is one that could be looked at. That's why I say everybody needs to be part of the funding formula and have an intergovernmental agreement. Because different municipalities and different counties are in different financial positions. It's just a matter of fact. And if one government agency that is a significant contributor cuts 25%, that's going to affect operations. That's my whole point on why this thing needs to be methodical, deliberate, it needs to incorporate everybody. And just getting a contract with Hart County and Northeast Georgia Animal Shelter is not going to fix the problem. That's my point.
So what's the timeframe?
I can't tell you the timeframe. It's going to involve Hartwell, Royston, Cannon, Bowersville.
Right, right, I know that, but...
Hart County, Franklin County.
If they're going to Franklin County as well for money, and they're going to Elder County as well for money?
I can't speak for anybody else.
But they're coming to you right now, so what is the timeframe that Hart County can apply to?
Hart County is willing to look at, I think you've heard just that, but we got to look at the big picture as well.
Yeah, but they need a timeframe to know what to present to you. So can you give them a timeframe, two months, three months, six days, you with us?
I don't know that we can, but anything that we do, anything that we do...
I can't hear everybody at one time.
Anything we do would have to be contingent upon everybody else coming to the table. That would only be fair to Hart County taxpayers.
So when is your budget due, when is Franklin County's budget due?
All different years. Our fiscal year starts October 1.
Okay, so they got October, right, October 1, so you need something more specific?
Doesn't fix the problem.
No, 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 no. Let me be clear, our budget will be passed before October 1.
Takes effect October 1.
So when do you need something to evaluate, because they need to know what to work on, so like how?
We're talking about the wrong range, I mean, it'd be worthful having what is the budget done, anything will happen.
So you're saying you don't think you'll fund it this year?
No, that's not.
All right, let's take an advisory.
We know what we're looking at.
We're the ones making decisions here.
Right, but we also bug you in, so we are in the decision, so you do have to listen to us. So what they need to know is when do they need to clean something by?
At this point in time, their budget's staying just what they asked for. At this point in time, that's what's...
So you're going to vote on that right now in the long term?
No, 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 no. We'll vote on the whole budget.
This is the first budget meeting we've had to even discuss the budget.
We'll vote on the whole budget at one time. But right now, it's sitting at the same amount they asked for.
Okay, so that's what they're going to give you for now, but they need to know what we're working on.
We're looking for down, we want this worked out where we ain't sitting here doing the same thing next year.
Right.
But we still need to be under contract to be legal.
Right, so when do you need the contract, by October, before October 1, right?
You've got to do a one-year contract, I mean, there's ways to get around it, one-year agreement.
How long does it take you to vote on something? So if your budget starts fiscal year October 1, does it take you two weeks? Does it take you three months? What does it take you so they can get you a contract to evaluate for this coming fiscal year?
It's going to take a while, just being honest with you. As far as, let me, six months.
Six months, six months.
Just throw that out there, I'm just throwing that out there. That way, that gives everybody an opportunity, all the other municipalities and the Franklin County's Board of Commissioners. They're all impacted. And to just try and hem Hart County up and say this, I'm trying to be realistic here, folks, and I know somebody don't like to hear me say this, but if you want it to work, all the parts have to work together. You can't have one or two pulling this way and one or two pulling that way, everybody's got to work together. We have a great working relationship with Franklin County Board of Commissioners. I think things with the municipalities will work as well. But until everybody is bound in some kind of intergovernmental agreement and their commitments that have been made by both sides, you're going to have these same problems and everybody's going to be here every time it happens. I'm being realistic.
Joey, what we're looking at is going to bring you part of the...
But you're going to have to have everybody share.
Well, I think what they're saying, we're not responsible for what Franklin County brings in, we're not responsible for their dogs in bits, we're responsible for the Hart County pets.
I understand that, but my point... My point here is if Franklin County, for example, does a 25% budget cut and their numbers and all stay the same, for whatever reason they make that, and I'm just using this as a hypothetical example, it's going to affect your funding.
It will affect our funding. Jurisdiction allocations are set. That formula has been set for years, and that's not going to change.
But you're going to have a new board. I'm not going to keep arguing, I've explained my point.
I think the first point is just you get with the municipalities and Franklin County, whomever, and let's get a workshop, workstation set up.
Exactly.
And we can get that done fairly quickly, usually we can get together with them fairly quickly.
But again, yeah, I think, yeah, we can, we can work and do whatever.
Just a few of us that go and represent.
But I think they're under an oppression, we got to have an agreement nailed down with all, an intergovernmental agreement before we pass our budget.
We don't have to.
No.
That's not the case, that's what I'm trying to get across.
That's fine, so you're...
But going next year, we need to have.
Correct, and I have recommended...
That's what we said all along.
All the other budgets, the right cycles went through, and Joe is exactly right, not all municipalities have the same cycle on all their jurisdictions. Which is the last budget I have of this budget year that we are working on. So everybody else is paid, everybody else has been approved. So we're just looking right now at Hart County and that jurisdiction allocation. I'm concerned about the other jurisdictions, that budget's been approved by them, they're paid by them already, so we're just...
Correct, and that's the point I was getting to. We're looking at disagreement, it needs to be in place by next year's budget. The intergovernmental agreement, I want everybody to be in place by next year. Well, we ain't sitting here arguing like this. I mean, there's really no sense in this, if we got something everybody agrees on, again, saying we're going to agree with whatever thing they say? Probably not, that's the way negotiations go.
Well, somebody made a motion to, I suck it to my motion anyway, so I don't know if it's still there, you know? Here we go.
We done got lost again. I made a second.
Did you make a second?
But it's been so long, I don't even know what it was for, really.
All right.
Let's just take under advisement, and that's what you got to do.
Well, these people want to have confidence that we're going to do something.
I think they got confidence. One has got the motion, he wanted to read it back.
I wrote it, motion to work toward binding contract with these Georgia animal shelters.
Yeah, to turn it over to Carol to work with that board. No, it's a nonprofit.
Nonprofit, that's, we've got to come with a contract, that's where we're going.
Well...
Now, we can go with a different intergovernmental agreement with them.
That's what it would be, that's how it would be, because that's...
I think that's the one you worry about the most, is, you know, what he was looking to do, if Franklin County drops out.
I think we can enter into an intergovernmental agreement with them agreeing on...
On a contract with the animal shelter, with IGA, with the municipalities and governments.
But my train of thought here is if we're going to pay $10, I'm just using a number, don't take this to heart, if we're going to pay $10 per animal that's picked up in Hart County, what difference does it make in Franklin County, how many they pick up? Because we're obligated to that number.
And then if Franklin doesn't want to pay that, then they negotiate with them.
Y'all will carry this crowd to Franklin County, won't you?
Yeah, that doesn't matter what we do, if Franklin County won't pay, then Franklin County doesn't get the services that Hart County is getting because they have to.
That's not going to work that way.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to remind you that Hart County is blessed and very proud that we have animal control. Franklin County goes off, the best one we have is picked up and taken to Hart County.
Okay.
Not that we care less.
Okay. All right. Any other comment, question? All right, we did have a motion to second here, and my motion was to...
Break you down now, you done made the second.
To enter into a contract.
Just work toward a binding contract with Northeast Georgia Animal Shelter.
Okay.
Just direct the county attorney to start working on a contract, and then we'll work through the language.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Teasley.
And if you made the motion, I suck it as well.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Well, hold on, hold on.
What?
Going to authorize Kim to come up with a contract, what about, it's going to have to be contingent upon everybody else being part of this.
No, I don't see that.
That's first party. Why can't we not just have an agreement with them?
We can, but it's also got to be contingent upon everybody else funding it, if you're going to have the same amount of animals...
They're not asking for that, Joey.
I know, but we're...
They're not asking for us to fund Franklin County.
I'm not asking that, Marshall, all I'm saying is, is there are multiple pieces to this puzzle that come together, and there are multiple funding sources, but nobody... But you're asking Hart County to bind itself and no other government agency to do that, that's my point. I'm not going to argue with you. I don't have a problem with it, I'm just trying to make sure it's fair and equitable to everybody, that's my whole point.
I understand they've already got the budgets cleared with the other counties and municipalities.
What I'm saying is going forward the next fiscal year, the next fiscal year will start with the CD of Hartwell, I think, January 1.
Aren't we just buying a service, is this...
That's what you're doing, but it's also contingent upon everything else.
All right. So we had a motion to say that, I was calling for a vote.
Restate it, so we all know what we got.
My motion was to...
Direct the contract.
Work. Kim, read my motion.
Work toward a binding contract, Northeast Georgia Animal Shelter.
Okay. With a formula of how we've been used to doing this, right? I mean, there's an imaginary formula out there.
Nobody's ever said...
I like Carol's version, he just said, "Fix it, Kim."
Yeah.
He said, "Fix it, Kim."
Saying, "Suck it."
I mean, there's a lot of language that's got to go into this thing, too.
Well, Kim, she'll get it, she'll get it.
But the motion was to enter into a contract with Northeast Georgia...
Work on the motion.
But now we're directing her to draft a contract.
No, I said, "Work toward a motion, work toward a contract." That was my original, okay. Kim, we got it now. All right, motion, second by Commissioner Teasley, any other discuss? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's five of the vote.
Michael did sneak in on the shit, he wasn't here.
Okay, we appreciate all of y'all being here, appreciate your concerns, and we'll do what we can to get this working. If your board will be in contact with Mr. Portain there and get this done before, in a week or two, because we'll be voting on the budget pretty soon, okay? All right. Now we'll move on to elections budget.
1,800, right? How you doing, Mr. Neckley?
All right, you're up.
I'm trying to check it out here.
I don't know.
Where's the mail, your elections?
The what?
The crazy cat ladies are leaving.
Oh, the crazy cat.
I'm leaving at 7:15. I can go on.
Let's do this last one, then just...
I knew we were looking right at it. If it's a personnel front, let's be back there. But I bet it is.
All right, let's go, Mr. Hamlin?
Is this a personnel issue here?
Sir?
Is this a personnel matter?
Yes. I guess it is.
Is it what I think it's about?
Sir?
Is it what I think it's about, we talked about before?
Yes, sir.
No.
No, both.
This all needs to be discussed, this all needs to be in executive session, I think, that's my opinion.
I don't see that.
I don't know what he's bringing, I don't know.
What did we talk about before? We've talked about this before, that's why I said. And we said wait till this time, y'all are calling now.
Well, I don't know what you want to do with poker, but I don't understand if you want to do a poker. I put the numbers down, but she turned it into a poker, I don't know what else to do from there. I found it. Well, it's his point, I don't know, is you want more than what she told you. So everything's in there what you have. So, everything's in there what you have. Everything that Gary wants is already in that budget. I wasn't sure, I didn't understand what he wanted to do with polls. If they're in there, whatever he wanted to pay for, it was already in there.
It says for year twenty-four on our sheet, that what you said, it's already in?
Yes, whatever she turned in, that was already in the budget. I didn't know.
That's... That's what... That's recommended.
Fifty-five, seventy-five.
That's what he's saying.
So, all your stuff's already been cleared, did it?
Yes, sir.
Push that right here. You keep going if you want to.
We need to talk about it. You know what they should do.
And she will be...
You know what it's gonna cost.
Trying to figure out what he had on... We recommended it, I'm changing up. I had notes, but I can't remember what it was. Been there and done that, man.
So, are you happy with this?
Yes, sir.
Then there's nothing to talk about, right?
Thank you.
There's things... We need to discuss this, guys. I'm not saying I'm not against it, Gary, but we need to review it.
Yes, sir.
I mean, because this is all lumped together.
Okay.
This personnel matter.
What do you want me to do?
I just...
Do you want to schedule an executive session another time, or...
Well, you have to come back.
Well, it's a long drive, probably ten minutes.
It doesn't matter, I mean... I mean, I know we've made some commitments. We'll honor those commitments, I think, but it needs to be... There's gotta be some other changes, too.
I'll accept whatever your decision is, obviously.
That's all I'm saying.
Why don't we need to come back at the next meeting, then? Next regular meeting?
Terry, we're not going with the, um, the one seven three nine fifty-five?
Where's that last number?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay.
That's a matter.
About this last year, because we don't have years in elections.
That's what I was thinking, it wasn't supposed to be in there, I mean... We went down for approval, so...
Are we good, Terry, as far as these numbers that's in here? Everything's gonna turn out alright, and... Huh?
It's... It may be balanced, but there's some headcount, structural, pay grade issues that have got to be discussed. It's got to be discussed. But it's gotta be discussed, and needs to be discussed in executive session.
If y'all wanna kick one executive session, do offer a couple minutes in the floor. Don't do them all, one down, that's not...
I think that'd probably be a good idea. Because we met, we met on this topic in early spring, and we said we...
You got one for...
Pre-busied it, and we never really had that follow-up meeting, right?
You got one for...
Right. Yeah. Mad shrink.
It's not new personnel, it's just changes within the department.
Right.
There's not any new personnel, other than fire, which is different, but you're gonna include your personnel personnel. It's just rank or regiment, all the existing personnel.
Which is a set of precedents. Which could set of precedents, if I understand it correctly.
And that last one you mentioned, we probably need to do that in executive session, too.
I mean, Frankie, Frankie give you all their information, that kind of...
Well, no, um, like a fire department, we probably need to do it in executive.
No, that's just end spots, that's not all individuals, that's just end conditions. You're not told about it, or you're not told about particular individuals, that's ahead, swaps, the way to hire.
If we got multiple, I'm fine with, you know, uh...
The two, um, six hours, we've already talked about fast, or first of all, the office, and...
We can go into executive session personnel, and Mark can put together an affidavit.
You didn't know yet.
You good with that, Kim?
Is there something on the elections coming up that y'all are gonna miss?
I know, we're gonna have to go.
Elections.
How long do you think it'll take?
Six, seven minutes, because I'll tell you when on.
Okay. Let's do it. Let's do it.
I don't know what they have to make decisions, but I want y'all to understand where it's coming from.
We need to exit, can you motion to exit?
Yeah.
Can you motion to exit into executive session for personnel?
Yes, you got a question?
I'd just like to make one comment on elections, if I might, before you return. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Hi, those of you who probably know me, my name is Allen Brown, I'm from Frankie's District Two. And I just wanted to say that I've been an election worker since 2018. I've seen many of you at the polls after we close. And I think the staff that we have here in the elections office, Robin and Lacy and Gary and all the people that they kind of command and steer, do a wonderful job. And I think sometimes they don't get public recognition of that, now maybe I've missed it. But I would just encourage everyone that's listening to this and watching this to keep that in mind. It is not an easy task to manage all those elections workers and us, all the voters that come in and may or may not know the process. So, I just wanted to go on record thanking Robin and their team as a poll worker, and I would encourage other people to get involved in that process and see how it works. That's all. And I appreciate y'all, Allen.
Thank you, Allen.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
I gave you a motion to exit the executive session personnel.
I gave a motion by Commissioner Person...
Personnel.
Uh, Commissioner Brown, say, uh, Commissioner Dorsey. All in favor?
Y'all, and that motion you gotta include, Gary.
We need to discuss it first.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I'm gonna be checking the motions out.
I actually took a note. I said I picked Jim Martell. It was Commissioner's meeting and the date, so.
All right. Sounds good. They're coming back.
It might be a while though.
Okay, I thought it was like 10 minutes.
It's a while, so. I mean, it depends, but some of the people want that.
Gotcha. Thanks.